Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone this afternoon to the notice of special meeting, August 21st, 2017. Notice is hereby given of a special meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on the 21st day of August 2017, at the hour 3:00 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on August 18th, 2017, at 10:30 AM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, and a copy furnished to the County Clerk at Cameron County, Texas, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. Present, we have Board Member Arwells, Scott Friedman, and D. Wells. Absent, we have Jeff Kepplinger and Whitey Thomas. This meeting has been duly posted as required by the law. Moving to invitation and the Pledge of Allegiance, item number two.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, please bless us this day and let us just remember your knowledge and as we consider the items we're about to review. Say these things, name is Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. Moving to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. That includes the board, staff. Anyone at this time like to discuss or share anything openly in public? Thank you. Moving to item number four, presentation by Estrada Hinojosa on potential impact of the possible bond election.
Hello, my name's Adrian Galvan with Estrada Hinojosa. I've got a handout that hopefully you guys received a copy of. And, but we've been, we've been working with staff on sizing different bond election scenarios and the tax rate impact that would occur with that. If you flip to past the first page, it's, it's titled summary, and this is the estimated cost that we've been given. Total's at the bottom, $16,435,000. So that's what I'm working with for the bond sizings in the, in the following pages. If you flip to the next page, it's labeled at the top, pre-2018. The tax rate, column J, for the year that's coming up is locked in right now at 4.386 cents. It's a, it's in bold there for fiscal year 18. So that's a starting point going forward. This is your existing debt profile, no debt, no additional debt. If you flip to the next page, this is sizing an open market transaction 20 years, which is the preference of the district because of the saltwater and the damage, and we don't borrow over 20 years down here for that. And this is sizing an open market deal with current market rates plus 60 basis points. So that's a cushion in case rates go up, and assuming bonds pass and you, you issue the bonds in March of next year. So the impact, you would go from 4.38 cents to 8.3 cents, and that's reflected on column J for year 19. So the increase is 3.9 pennies. The next page, so questions, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. It is on all the pages, and that's with the collection rate of 92.5%.
Yes.
Is that just the average the district has, or is that just?
It's a conservative rate. Usually, we just go with, with current, that current plus delinquent. So that's why it's lower than, than 100%. And historically, that's what we've used for, for you guys. But like I said, all these are, are conservative assumptions on interest rates.
So that could have some upside potential if we had a better collection.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, the tax rate impact.
That's what we strive for.
So a higher collections rate, and if borrowing rates stay at the same level that we're at right now, the impact's going to be lower than what we're showing here.
Retire the bond quicker.
I think the actual's about 97%, is what the actual is.
I'd have to fire my.
It's a pretty good, it's a pretty good.
We can visit that later, but.
Yeah, I could, I could run scenarios with what different, it's just type in a number in there and then a new tax rate comes out.
Thank you.
And that's, so if you look at column G, the annual payment on the new deal is about 1.2. And if you go to the next page, case B, this is if we go to the Water Development Board. You guys borrowed with the Water Development Board last November at a rate of 1.6. So I'm doing a conservative rate of a 2.2, just for comparison purposes in this scenario. So just 2.2 is on, on this page, right? And the previous page was a 404. The difference between those, those two columns of debt service, if you go with the Water Board, it's, it's on the la, the next page, you could drop about 170,000 in, in annual debt service if we qualify all these for the Water Board and we're able to borrow with the Water Board.
Let me stand with you. Thank you. On the first, first actual page was the.
Open market.
16.2.
Right.
That's, that's the open market?
Open market, you get ratings, you go to underwriters, you, you price it. If you go to the Water Board, which at the bottom, it says page three or four, I'm assuming a rate of a 2.2. So even though the borrowing, and if you look at the titles, the borrowing for the Water Board loan is, is 200,000 and change higher because of their origination fee. They charge, but because their interest rate's so, it's, it's so low, it's, it makes sense to go after. And my understanding is Charles has already contacted the, the Water Board and all these projects, or most of them are qualified?
Yeah, they'd be clean water and drinking water revolving point.
So if, if they qualify for the Water Board, just that.
A little bit up front, we're going with the GWDB, and we have a little bit of the origination fee, but it's significant on the bottom line at the end of that page, 3.4.
Right, 3.3 on a future value basis, less debt service that you're going to pay if we're able to get this on the Water Board.
Well, the interest rate just reduces it significantly, and at the end of the 20 years, we're paying like 4 million less.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's 3, it's 2 points of interest, 3.3 million, if you look at page 404, on a future value basis, debt service. So it makes a lot of sense, and we, we've got good, good experience with the Water Board. Charles has set the record for getting a deal approved through the Water Board. So I'm, I'm comfortable that, you know, we can go that route. And that, that brings the interest rate down. Let's go just, I'd quoted you at 8.3 cents. The tax rate would go to 8.3 cents. The Water Board scenario only goes up to 7.7 cents. Again, page three or four. And even the Water Board scenario that I'm showing you, it's, I'm showing you a 2.2 with the cushion, and just remember, we just did a deal 1.6 in, in October of last year, and rates are about the same levels they were October.
This is conserve 2.2, is a conservative.
It is a conservative number. I wanted to.
So if we, if we get approval, then, then we go out shopping for the bonds next year.
Yeah, and, and if the rates are at the same level, you're going to get a 1.6 or, or similar as, as you did last October. So it's, I mean, with, when we're in front of clients, we always tell them, on a new money project, you borrow when you need it. And all I'm telling you right now is, the interest rate environment is favorable to, to go out for projects. But I just wanted to provide you guys all the, the figures. If you have any questions on the, the sizing, or the impacts, or any other question on the, on the debt side, I know this is a lot of, a lot of numbers.
That's okay. I bet you laid it out. Sorry, I'm speaking, guys. You laid it out where I could grasp it pretty easily and look into bottom lines and everything. So the, the open market and Water Board is seen to be the best options. That's your recommendation? I assume your recommendation is the Water Board.
Oh, if, if we qualify for the Water Board at the, at the subsidized rates, it's, it just makes total sense. And the TCEQ gets out of the way because the Water Board replaces TCEQ approval. So it's, it's, it's a twofer.
Right.
Because we've already got that.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to go through the district's review team if we go through Water Development Board.
Okay.
So that would, that would make getting to the, to the actual point of borrowing faster, I believe, than just dealing with TCEQ directly.
What's included in the existing debts of the 21 million? What's included in that now?
I would have to fire up my, my laptop. This is just your, your voted, your prior voted.
Is that desolization deal part of that, or that's actually what we owe now?
No, what we owe now?
Yeah, it could be our system improvements and then prior tax, like a 2003 or 2005, somewhere in there.
Nothing without D-SAL.
Okay, nothing without D-SAL over there.
Yeah.
Because the D-SAL was never funded.
We never issued it.
So it was so.
It's never been issued.
Right.
So that's, that's the summary. If you guys have questions, or I'll, I'll run additional scenarios with the, with additional, with the coverage, I mean, the, the collections rate.
I don't think that's necessary. I just brought it up, just, I thought was, you know, I'd rather beat the conservative investment that you presented, and then, you know, the district work towards, you know, you know, recover it all we can.
Sure.
That's what I'm interested in.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, discuss and consider the approval of an engineer report detailing the projects to be considered at the proposed November 7, 2017 bond election.
All right. Would you like to hear any presentation on it, or, or just?
I'm open for it.
Yeah, Richard, if you want to get an update from the workshop.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Correa with Carver for the record. So working with your staff, we have massaged gently the report to include the projects that were discussed at the last workshop, based on y'all's approval, and that includes everything except the reuse, advanced water treatment, and the second water tank for Port Isabel. So these are all the projects that we went through, line by line, at the workshop, and were approved.
Agreed upon.
Or, I'm sorry?
Agreed.
Agreed upon. Thank you for, for that correction. Yes, sir. Agreed upon. That's correct. And so again, just to, just to recap, this is outlining justification for those projects, the need, and the cost estimation or anticipated costs associated with each of these projects. And another quick recap or little history, these are projects that have been identified as a need by your staff since what date, Charles, since you pretty much came here?
I don't know how long we've dreamed of having headworks or sewer plants, so it's been.
Right. So again, they're, they're, they are expensive projects, but they're necessary. And this is started at operators and staff level, all the way up through when Charles first came on board, and they're projects that have just been kind of, I guess, kicked down the road, if you will.
I mean, I've been, some of these have been in development since 2011 when I started working.
That's correct. And so this just encapsulates the justification and the anticipated costs for each of these projects, as outlined by your staff.
I, I had mentioned to Charles and Carlos a little earlier in the meeting that one of my questions, the concerns is that everything that really needs to be in this bond is there, is anything that we're not looking. And so my hesitation before of not necessarily wanting to move through right now was based on that. But what I'm hearing is, this has been massaged and worked on and defined pretty well to meet the district's need in their future 10 years or so, my, my term line.
That's correct.
My timeline. Thank you. So the other question I might have with that, and maybe bond guy, is that we have these projects and we're identified within this bond, and if the, something did pop up that we really needed to take and address, can any of these engineer items be adjusted, amended, or changed for something that might come up in the future that's deemed more important than one of these items?
Is Noel on the line?
Noel? Oh, here, let me check on a minute.
But I mean, but.
In general, we're using the same format.
You can, you can answer it.
Oh, yeah, we're using the same format as we did in the 2011 system improvements. So our bond council language, basically any system improvement is going to fall under the language that's on our election order, that, that's being presented at, at this time. So if there's project changes where we see a different project that wasn't identified in this list, I mean, that's all within the ability of the election.
So there's, there's flexibility as needed in the future for using the bonds at the time.
Right.
And I'll, and I'll use the example that the one bond that's been a topic of conversation, seawater specific, which rendered it specific. So this bond is written to just cover the repair needs of the district.
Yeah.
So we're, we have the flexibility, if you will.
The monies can only be spent as outlined and identified in this, in this scenario.
Right.
You can't, you can't change project, if I may clarify, you can't just say, the project may call for rebuilding the yellow plant over here. No, we're going to rebuild the red plant over here, and we're going to use a whole group of different products and materials. It's pretty defined and outlined as to how the monies are spent.
Right.
And those have to be in accordance. Is that right, Adrian? I mean, that's.
I think the, the actual paperwork that Noel sent has this information.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's the case. It is the same line item list that we've got in our presentation is pulled out of the bond election information.
Right, and, and.
Because we do have to stay.
Yes, we do have to stay.
Can't misappropriate or spend funds for other projects.
Right.
They have to be outlined and identified as, as passed on this and as passed by the voters.
Okay, so if it's, if it's dedicated to headworks, it's got to be spent on headworks, to use that example. On that pump rehab or whatever it is, I know you've got a bunch of, you've moved money around a little on that, though, and I.
Yeah, that's why.
I know there's a bunch for the brand new one, and I was kind of like.
Yeah, I mean, the, because, because our team went out, or our engineers with operators, they went out, they assessed each site, and they came up with that cost estimate based on an assessment, you know, filled visit of each location. And even though Lift Station 19 is a brand new pump station, we still have a wet well that needs to be lined, or a receiving manhole that needs to be lined. So that's why there's cost in there for that. And even, you know, Lift Station 11 has issues that we rebuilt that lift station in 2012, but there are needs out there that we need to address through rehab still. So.
My second question's going to be, and I guess this is to you guys, is this additional payment going to strap us to where we can't do other things there?
No, that's why we're using our property tax base, because it's not going to affect our, our debt service on the revenue side.
Yeah, on a revenue deal, you're, you're constrained by the coverages. The net revenue available has to be there to cover the debt. Now on this one, it's just if you're, you know, how much, do you want to increase your tax rate to cover?
Property tax.
Property tax.
And how much is that going to amount to at 100,000 bucks if we're going to jump, roughly? Anybody got a?
Do you want the increase, or you want?
Yeah, the, now the difference between what we got now and say, a $100,000 valuation, what, how much?
I said per 100,000.
Yeah, per 100,000.
It won't take long.
Because I know I'm reading that out of control, but I'm just curious. That's going to be the first question to ask.
Yeah, here you go.
I guarantee you.
So the increase on the worst case, which is the open market, is .03916, and then at the 100,000, $39.16 is the annual impact, $100,000.
So on a $200,000 home, we're looking at 80 bucks here.
Double, I guess. So the $78.
Sell that, sell that. And then the.
Six dollars and 50 cents.
A 50-year-old system to 2017.
$6.50 increase.
Per month on a $200,000.
Per month, right. And there's going to be substantial energy savings on this and all kinds of other good things. I'm, I'm running it through my head how we're going to sell this.
Yeah, we're going to be reducing our own INCs.
I just know how people think, so.
So to, to go back to the lift stations, for example, as Charles mentioned, we went out with your staff to each and every lift station that is in operation, and rehab ranged from simple recoats of the exterior piping that could become corroded, to full pump replacement, additional wet wells. But replacing pumps is going to save energy. Part of what we did is, at Andy Bowie, look at your, your blowers. That's going to, that'll lead to a substantial savings just replacing the blowers at Andy Bowie that'll reduce your overall monthly electric bill. So yes, sir, there, there are a lot of different components. Some of it is energy-based. Some of it's just general rehab. Others, like the sludge drying beds, is just in terms of maintenance and ease of, of maintaining the facilities. Yes, sir.
How do you want to proceed through this, and we want to go by this? I mean.
And what I'm seeing here, going back to the earlier paperwork we had, talking, still staying with the bond payment, on the open market scenario and then the Water Board scenario, the rates actually increase?
The interest rate.
On the third day, third year?
We will have the, the interest rate is a 402, the overall borrowing rate for the open market versus a 2.2 on one of them.
I'm sorry, I was referring to the required INS.
Yeah, it's, it's got, yeah, required INS increase, which is column K on both of them, it drops. The Water Board is a lower increase because it's the lower borrowing cost. The number that I quoted you a minute ago on $100,000 house, that, that's on the open market deal. That shows the worst case. I can run it real quick on the Water Board.
But, okay, and the Water Board, does, does, does this increase in the third year on both, both scenarios? Goes from .045 to .077.
Okay, so this is the year that's already been set, the year coming up. This is the increase right here.
That's just the increase.
Yeah. This, this is where the increase happens.
This is, this is.
That's the increase.
That's the amount of increase, the .03375.
That's correct.
All right, so the, okay, so the number you gave us, it was 40 bucks for 100,000, was based on this increase?
It's, yeah, which is, it's going to be the sum right here. The difference between those two numbers, I took that number times 100,000 divided by 100.
Okay, so, so I guess to answer Rich's question, if I'm understanding correctly, is that this, the rate of increase to per 100,000 is only this .03375 per 100,000, that would be the increase.
Right.
To cover this debt.
Yeah.
That was the $40?
Correct. That's not the existing plus the increase, that's just the incremental.
That's the additional cost to the taxpayer. I get it. It's a lot of money, but it don't sound that drastic. Well, you can get a lot of bank for the buck. I mean, that's going to save a lot of INCs, and get everything modernized. Well, we have to bring it up to. I know. Operate. I know. And, you know, again, I still go to this enough, you know, we cut out the second sledge hole we tanked. You know, I still feel okay with that. And I think that, you know, just the energy savings and then the efficiency, and we're going to get rid of some lift stations, I think I recall, can get rid of some lift stations so we can go ahead and get the district more efficient. And that's going to require some funding to do it. And then, making a joke, Charles, I'm making a joke now. And when we do get this money, we'll make sure Charles doesn't blow it away. We'll use it the right way.
Adrian.
It's a joke.
Yes, sir.
That, that's a great point. I forgot to mention that. There were two lift stations, I believe in particular, that we looked at preliminarily and eliminating. We've got money in that estimate to eliminate those lift stations, obviously. We need to get a design to determine how we eliminate them. But looking at your base maps, if we can eliminate those two or even more lift stations, that'll obviously be the goal to reduce ONM costs, for sure.
My next, my next question I have is, what's the participation of power we're going to be to presenting this to the three cities, the three towns, to present the sale to the Board of Aldermen or Board or Council members, explaining what this is going to do for their city, what impact this will have, and the improvements it will make in each of the three cities that will be proposed.
That's a great point. We are ready, willing, and able. As you know, I'm here locally. I live in LaFaria, Texas. So as meetings are scheduled, we will gladly participate. Absolutely.
Because it's going to take some information.
Sure, absolutely.
The three, I liked, when I've done this in the past, we've done three presentations to each city council, and three open public sessions, one for each city, you know, so people can go and discuss and learn and be informed.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
How much of a factor will go to the best time? That's probably the least effective, isn't it?
Well, there's a lot, quite a bit of lift station rehab that was called out in Laguna Vista. Yes, sir. Yep. Yes, sir.
They got a lot of boats out there now.
Yes, sir.
They're going to push a lot of boats.
We'll get one more shot. Well, he has been on line.
Item number six.
Five for approval.
Hello?
Yes.
Noel?
Just making contact with you, Nora. Make sure you're ready.
Okay, very good.
Questions on the next item number six.
Well, five, we have.
Five, we have to take action on.
I'll make a motion to approve the engineer's report.
Second. Motion made by D. Wells for approval, seconded by Arwells. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are. Kind of opposed, thank you. Moving on to item number six, discuss and consider the approval of an order calling a bond election for the Laguna Monterey Water District on November 7, 2017, and making provisions for conducting such election and other provisions identical and related therein to Resolution Number 154-08-17.
I have a question. Do we make the motion first?
We can do however you want.
Could my question be, originally, they were talking about doing a cranking in the D-SAL deal, and you don't, we don't, won't do that, if we don't do this. Are we going to address that at all, or just do this and leave that hang?
We're going to leave that for the future.
Huh?
We're, we're not going to address the seawater issue at all at this time.
It's not going to mention it at all.
Correct.
But we're just not going to do it.
Right. Like, we're not issuing debt, we're not issuing any conditions.
We're not even going to mention it.
Right.
We don't want to put that on another item?
No.
I, I've raised the question that, in the language of the bond, that if it's, and I want the bond people and our attorney to look at it and answer it, if it's.
It's either a.
D-SAL specific, or can that bond money, the way it's worded, be used for another reuse? I, I just asked them for that clarification. What my question, I guess, would be, would, what if they say, well, God, you guys still got 15 or 16 million, and you're wanting another 16? Would it, is there, do two propositions and go ahead and eliminate that one, or?
Well, well, we did have the resolution on the last meeting, but we did have a lot of quorum, but it seems like that created a lot of controversy, so we didn't place it on the agenda.
Which is, they almost seem like blackmail.
Right, right.
But in there, what if we put that in two propositions, and it has been found unfeasible? I mean, is there a reason you guys don't want to turn loose to that?
Yeah, I think we've answered that question.
That was me bringing up the question of, you know, wanted somebody to review. It'd almost be like we're swapping it out, so we're really not. Well, I thought of that originally, but. Spending any more money if we did it that way.
It kind of threw everything off also because of those kind of confusion, to what I saw. So we deleted everything from the D-SAL. Noel, were you there?
Easy. Rick's. My thought would be, we just tell everybody, we're just trading that money out for stuff we need.
Yes, but if I may say, though, that, that bond money, right, if, if it kicked in, the rate would be that, that bond, because it's already been approved. It hasn't been issued, so we're not paying for it.
Right.
For the debt service. You, you can run those numbers if.
You have reached the voicemail box of.
And it's really a, a matter of.
Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we could almost look like a trade-out, but without wording it the way we were going to word it, maybe in two increments. Hey, we're not going to do this, but we're going to use about the same amount. Ask, ask the question. And do all of this good stuff.
Yeah, Bank Council's line, hey, hey, Noel, can you hear?
I can't. I heard a couple of folks speaking.
Yes, sir. My, my question is, we've got that D-SAL bond we've never used, and it's about the same amount. And I'm wondering if we ought to do two propositions, one where we're saying, no, we've decided not to do it on the D-SAL. They vote for that, and then you go ahead on a second one and show that basically we're just looking to spend the same money to do a whole lot of good things that we really need. And, and do it maybe as two, two propositions, or, or I don't know, they had a, an amendment written, but it almost seemed like a blackmail deal to me. And, and I'm just wondering if we ought to do two things, and that way we can basically say, we've decided not to do the D-SAL, but yet we've got a whole list of really important projects that we're going to use the, basically the same amount of money, but yet get it off the table so they're not thinking, oh, my God, they were going to want to do them both. I don't know, it's just, however.
I understand, and I think we're trying to get to the same place. There's a couple of underwriting concerns. And the one is, as you know, when we do hold the election and ultimately issue bonds, the Attorney General can pass, you know, with whatever proposition language that we use, and an overriding concern that the Attorney General always had, and the proposition's that 5% to the. is the proposition that we present to the voters are confusing in any way. To the voters know what it is that they're voting at the time that they're, at the time that they're voting. So that, uh, right now, obviously, if you call a bond election and you're voting for authorization to do projects, it's yes or no. And, and that's what the statute dictates that you vote to vote against the issue of bonds. To the extent here in this situation, what we have, a situation where we have voted authority that the current board may not want to utilize it, because they may want to, uh, try to voters to vote yes for the current election by name. If, if you vote yes, we will no longer issue pursuant to prior outstanding authority. That, in that was what we're trying to get, without being confused by having a resolution that stated should this election pass, we will no longer issue under vote. So I understand your concern where it sounded, it, it sounded that the, the old fashioned is, is say, you know, if we do this, you won't do that, or whatever the case, but in that was what that resolution was trying to do, and it's based on case law, is, is creating a contract with the voters. And, and I've had others, cities in the state of Texas where you create a contract with the voters by letting them know that although we can't put on the ballot a yes or no vote of the authorization that you've already given us in the past, we will contract you with, we will contract with you by stating that should you vote yes, we will no longer issue under your prior authorization. That's what that resolution was trying to do. And just because it's not on your agenda right now doesn't mean that if you call a bond election today, you can't come back and consider that resolution prior to the election. But because you know it's not on your agenda today-
So that's the legal way to do it then?
It is the legal way, to the extent that we wanted to, you can still, you can do this. If you wanted, it's a long proposition as you can see anyways. But if you wanted to vote to Attorney General and argue that in some form of fact, in some form, you wanted to approve a, a, a sentence in your proposition stating that, in the proposition, the actual election proposition, that if the voter voted yes, then the voter voting will win. That would be, like I said, that would need to be approved by Attorney General. But if you wanted to include, it would have to be passed by them, but they'd have to, they, they'd have to tell a lot that it's not easy to the voter. So there's a possibility that it would pass. That can also be done if you approve the call of the bond election today with the voters who are in the election, who are with you. And then, you can run that question by the Attorney General and then come back. If they should answer yes, and the election was, the important thing today is calling the election. If you all choose to call the election, the amount of the election and the projects for which you're calling the election, those would be important to be in there. Now, if you all wanna come back at a later date and approve the resolution that creates a contract with the voters or have them pass some opposition language by means of determining your election ability, I mean, voted ability, if your proposition passed, I can do that too. Honestly, that, that's just the direction for the board.
Okay, great, yeah. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Noel. We'll, we'll keep you online there.
Okay, I'll stay online.
Item number six, do we, uh-
I move to approve.
Item number six is for approval by D Wells.
Second.
Seconded by R Wells. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are. Are there any opposed? None? Motion does carry. Thank you. We've got some work to do in the future. Item number seven is the adjournment at 3:34 PM. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your persistence.